I have eleven sixteen and sixteen eighteen. You're not gonna believe this. The vote is one hundred and twenty-one to sixty-one. It would take one hundred and twenty-two to pass. So the motion fails.
I move for a recount.
We cannot do a recount, but we can do a reconsideration. We had a count. We had a legitimate count. Okay? Now, a reconsideration has to be passed by two-thirds by the bylaw of this town. So essentially it'd get you two-thirds to reconsider. You've probably got your two-thirds to pass this. Okay? I would entertain a motion to reconsider, Mr. Markson.
No move.
Is there a second? All right, the motion to reconsider has been made. Tellers, please count. All in favor of reconsidering Article one thirty-one? Please raise your cards. Tellers, please be as accurate as possible.
Three, four, five, six.
No, this is crucial.
Seven, eight, nine.
I'm not saying they weren't before, I'm just saying continue to read.
Twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty.
Twenty-eight.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two.
Twenty.
Twenty.
Forty.
Forty. All opposed to this reconsideration vote, please raise your cards.
Fourteen.
Fourteen. Twenty-one.
Nineteen.
Nineteen.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. The reconsideration vote fails one hun- uh seventy-six to one hundred and twenty. Would have, it would have taken one hundred and thirty-one. So, it still fails. Article thirty-two. Article thirty-one? Jim? Uh thirty-two, I'm sorry. Thirty-two.
I'll read Article thirty-one again.
No, you won't go there.
I move that the town vote to amend the zoning bylaw, section five point one, by changing the minimum lot dimension area in square feet in the first paragraph of the chart in section five point one for industrial B from same as business to three acres.
Do I hear a second? Motion's been made in second, would you care to speak to it, Mr. Merritt?
Um, it's really a housekeeping article. When industrial B was formed, the purpose for it was to have any, any development within the district be required to have three acres. Somehow it got written, um, over the years so that you had to have three acres only if you wanted to have a house. But most of the industrial B property that we have in town is all residential. So it's quite restrictive, this just makes it uniform throughout.
And you had a hearing?
Yes, we did have a hearing and we approved unanimously.
Questions? Seeing there are none, we move to a vote. This is a zoning board change, uh zoning, uh bylaw change, so two-thirds vote. All in favor of Article thirty-two, please raise your cards. Forty-three. Thank you.
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five?
Fifty-five.
All opposed, please raise your cards.
Zero.
Yes. Yes.
Zero.
Yes, yes. It's one hundred and seventy-eight to zero. I declare Article thirty-two passed unanimously. Article thirty-three.
Moderator, I move at the town vote to amend the official zoning map by rezoning a portion of the one point one four acres contained in lot number nineteen off Main Street currently owned by Mr. Roland Mellow from residential to business. Beginning at a point on the westerly side of Vane Street being the southwest corner of said lot, north fifty-eight degrees, fifty feet, forty inches, west ninety-five feet. Then south thirty-two degrees, twelve feet, fifteen inches, west one hundred and twenty feet. Then north forty-two degrees, thirty feet, west one hundred and ninety-three point nine feet. Then north fifty degrees, fifteen feet, east two hundred and fifteen feet. Then south forty-two degrees, thirty feet, east two hundred and seventy-five feet. This, this is very confusing, but...
Is it, that's printed, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, then you, you really don't have to go through this.
Um, really what this is, if I, well, well, second?
Uh, is there a second? Okay, before we even go on further, could you describe where this is?
This is right across the street from, um, Star Market, it's behind Andrews, um, Tunnel.
Behind that?
It's a parcel of land, it's like pork chops, so it has frontage on Route one oh five and then the remainder of it goes behind, um, Andrews Auto.
Thank you. Now, the planning board had a hearing?
We had a hearing and we voted to approve the article.
Okay, now, go.
Uh, the article really, again, is a housekeeping article. It's an article that, um, when the, the town voted zoning, they voted to a certain point along one oh five. At a later date, the gas station, which is now Andrews, was included. Um, but the normal depth is two hundred feet along Route one oh five and the small parcel that is now the Andrews Auto, um dealership or garage, um, did not go back to full depth. This kind of bisected Mr. Mellow's property. This just makes the map much more fluid and continuous and very easy to read and it allows his lot to conform completely to the zone.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Do you rise to discuss, Mrs. Marshall? No. Okay. We will move to a vote. She's going home. All in favor of Article thirty-three? Please raise your cards, tellers, please count. Tellers must count, this is a zoning bylaw change.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-eight. Thirty-eight.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. Forty-eight. Fifty-three. All opposed, please raise your cards.
Zero.
Zero. Thank you, one seventy-five to nothing. I declare this passed by unanimous vote. Article thirty-four. Mr. White?
Article thirty-four, I move at the town vote to accept Baker Lane as a townway that's laid out by the Board of Selectmen and to authorize the selection to acquire by gift and easement or fee simple in the way and any related easement as shown on the road layout plan drawn by Azor Land Sciences Inc. on file with the town clerk entitled Road Layout Plan Baker Lane, Hazel Road, Edna Circle, Gunners Way in Lakeville, Mass. dated January thirty-first, two thousand and three.
Is there a second?
Under my notes here, the planning board, the Board of Selectmen and the Highway Survey today have debated and approved the four roads and Chasebound Road.
Usually we bring Mr.
I know.
Hamilton up here and say, was it a good road? He's already beat us to it. Does anyone have a discussion on Article thirty-four? Are you rising for that? Obviously not. Uh, Article thirty-four brings to a vote by a simple majority. All in favor, raise your cards, please. Thank you. Put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. I see nothing raised. It is unanimously approved. Article thirty-five.
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to accept Azor Road as a townway that's laid out by the Board of Selectmen and to authorize the selection to acquire by gift and easement or fee simple in the way and any related easement as shown on the road layout plan drawn by Azor Land Sciences Inc. on file with the town clerk entitled Road Layout Plan Baker Lane, Hazel Road, Edna Circle and Gunners Way in Lakeville, Mass. dated January thirty-one.
Two thousand and three. Is there a second? Same statement, Mr. White?
Yes.
Any questions? No questions, we bring it to a vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed, please raise your cards. There are no cards raised. I declare it passed by unanimous vote. Article thirty-six.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to accept Edna Circle as a townway that's laid out by the Board of Selectmen and to authorize the selection to acquire by gift and easement or fee simple in the way and any related easements as shown on the road layout plan drawn by Azor Land Sciences Inc. on file with the town clerk entitled Road Layout Plan Baker Lane, Hazel Road, Edna Circle and Gunners Way in Lakeville, dated January thirty-first, two thousand and three.
Is there a second? Motion's been made in seconded. Same thing, Mr. LaCamera?
Yes.
Anybody have a question? Oh, you already got your hands up. First I have to ask for discussion. All in favor, raise your cards. Thank you, put them down. All opposed, raise your cards. There are no cards up, it passes unanimously. Article thirty-seven.
Mr. Moderator, Article thirty-seven, I move at the town vote to accept Gunners Circle as a townway that's laid out by the Board of Selectmen to authorize the selection to acquire by gift and easement or fee simple in the way and any related easement as shown on the road layout plan drawn by Azor Land Sciences Inc. on file with the town clerk entitled Road Layout Plan Baker Lane, Hazel Road, Edna Circle and Gunners Way in Lakeville, Mass. dated January thirty-first, two thousand and three.
Is there a second? Would you care to say anything else, Mr. White?
No, everyone else approved it.
Okay. Yes?
Can we just make that Gunners Way instead of it's Gunners Circle?
Did I say Gunnar?
Yeah.
It's printed as Gunners Circle, but it should be Gunners Way.
Typo.
Exactly.
Okay.
Just wanna make sure I don't have to change the name of my address label.
So what, it should read Circle? Way. Oh, I see, I see. Has editorially changed. Has anybody got a discussion? Okay. Move to a vote. All in favor, raise your cards. Thank you, put them down. All opposed, raise your cards. I see no opposition, it's passed unanimously. Article thirty-eight.
Moderator, I move at the town vote to accept Jennifer Lane as a townway that's laid out by the Board of Selectmen and to authorize the selection to acquire by gift and easement or fee simple in the way and any related easements as shown on the road layout plan drawn by Azor Land Sciences on file with the town clerk entitled As-Bill Plan for Jennifer Lane and Jamie's Way in Lakeville, Mass. dated February tenth, two thousand and four.
Seconded? Motion's been made in seconded. Would you care to discuss it, Mr. LaCamera?
No, it's all been approved by the Highway Survey and the Board of Selectmen.
Anybody else wanna talk about it? No. All raise your cards if you approve. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed? Nothing opposed. I declare it unanimously passed. Article thirty-nine.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to accept Jamie's Way as a townway that's laid out by the Board of Selectmen and authorized the selection to acquire by gift and easement or fee simple in the way and any related easements as shown on the roadmap layout by Azor Land Sciences Inc. on file with the town clerk entitled As-Bill Plan Jennifer Lane and Jamie's Way in Lakeville, Mass. dated February tenth, two thousand and four.
Seconded? Same song, Mr. LaCamera?
Yes.
Uh, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll go to a vote. All in favor, raise your cards. Thank you, put them down. All opposed? No opposed, unanimously passed. Article forty.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
I move at the town vote to accept Panetary Drive as a townway that's laid out by the Board of Selectmen to authorize the selection to acquire by gift and easement or fee simple in the way and any related easement as shown on the land layout plan drawn by Azor Land Sciences Inc. on file with the town clerk entitled As-Bill Plan of Panetary Drive in Lakeville, Mass. dated March twenty-second, two thousand and four.
Seconded? Same, same statement?
Same statement.
Any questions? None. All in favor, raise your cards. Thank you, put them down. All opposed? One card up, opposed. Just a spike. Passes by majority vote. Article forty-one.
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to accept Trinity Lane as a townway that's laid out by the Board of Selectmen and authorized the selection to acquire by gift and easement or fee simple in the way and any related easements as shown on the road plan drawn by Azor Land Sciences Inc. on file with the town clerk entitled As-Bill Plan of Trinity Lane in Lakeville, Mass. dated March twenty-second, two thousand and four.
Seconded? Same story? No discussion? There is discussion. Where is it? You're gonna slow everything down when we figure out where this is.
It's a Trinity Lane, where is it?
Trinity Lane, anybody know where it is? Off Mill. Off Mill Street. Joseph, Joseph, does it matter? If they like it? Seriously. Uh, does anyone really require a definition of where this, this lane is located? Yes? It's off Mill, all right? Does that satisfy you, Mr. Chamberlain? Okay. Further discussion being lacking, we will move to a vote. All in favor, raise your cards. Thank you, put them down. All opposed? All opposed? Someone's asleep with his hand up. He votes twice. Uh, there is no opposition, it's unanimously passed. We come to Article forty-two.
Mr. Moderator, I vote that the town considers the former Ted Williams Camp property be managed for the sole purpose of outdoor recreational and athletic facilities. The current buildings on the former Ted Williams Camp property shall be operated, maintained and repaired so that they preserve the remaining open space and recreational areas within the camp. Any new structures on the property shall solely serve as support facilities for outdoor recreation and athletic facility uses. This article also supports the completion of the town library. The former Ted Williams Camp property is described as being generally bounded by Bedford Street, Precinct Street and Moon Pond within the town of Lakeville and shown approximately on Assessors Map Thirty, Block Five, Lot Three and Map Twenty-seven, Block Two, Lot Twenty-eight, belonging to the Lakeville Baseball Camp Incorporated and more particularly described in certain deeds through the corporation recorded at the Fulness County Registry of Deeds in Book Twenty-seven oh four, page four oh three and Book Forty-one oh nine, page five ninety-three, containing one hundred and thirty acres more or less or take any action relative thereto.
Before I'm even going to ask for a second, I'm going to ask Town Council for an opinion whether or not this article is in fact an article that can be acted upon by town meeting. So, Town Council.
Through you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, I was asked to take a look at this because, um, it's a bit unusual in its format. And as a matter of fact, this, uh, article does not, and the motion under it does not state a purpose that's within the power of town meeting. In part, it restates a purpose that already exists on the parcel and in part, uh, where it gets into the, um, support of the completion of the library, it's just a statement of sentiment. Um, town meeting, like all officers and boards and officials of the town, has limited power. Certain things it is able to do, certain things it is not able to do. And one thing it is not able to do is to direct any officer in the performance of his or her duty. It just don't have that power to do that. Town meeting has the power to legislate and to appropriate, to accept statutes and a few other things. So, to a certain extent, this repeat, the status quo, it just restates it uh, as far as talking about the recreational purpose that is now on the property. The property has designated custodian, which is the selection, and this vote can't change that. And to the extent it gets into the quote-quote "support" of the completion of the town library, it's also venturing into an area where the town meeting has no power. So because of that, it's a statement of sentiment, uh, shall we say, it is not, has no legal effect and whether it's voted up or it's voted down, it will not change the status quo.
In other words, at best, this is a resolution, but it cannot really affect anything. As I understand it, is that correct, Town Council? And we can proceed it either as a resolution, seconded, or simply let it die, but it isn't going to change anything. There, you are a legislative branch of government. You make the laws. But you cannot infringe on the executive branch of government and their duties.
I've, I've been in town forty-six years and when we bought the property, this Ted Williams Camp property, I believe we said that it was supposed to be kept that way and only the perimeter of it was rebuildable. And, so I, I don't know that this would change anything.
It, well, it's not going to change anything. I mean, if we take a vote, it's simply a consensus vote. It doesn't do anything. Do you wish to continue it as a consensus vote, or?
Yes, I would.
All right. Then we will just proceed. Well, we don't have to do that, we're just going to have a show of hands and make the count. All in favor of the, uh, opinion as, as offered, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed? Thank you, you may put them down. I would, I would say generally, uh, two-thirds of the House supports it and one-third does not. We move to Article forty-three.
Mr. Moderator, Article forty-three. Finance Committee is liable to withdraw this article, so there's no need to put it to stabilization point.
Article forty-three has been withdrawn, we move to Article forty-four.
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to raise and appropriate fifty thousand dollars to the reserve fund.
Seconded? I take that the Finance Committee supports this article?
Finance Committee approves.
No discussion? Move to a vote. This is a majority vote. All in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you, you may put them down. All opposed? I see no opposition, I, I see no opposition, it is unanimously passed. I thank you for your patience this evening. Once again, we've done it. I would entertain a motion to dissolve. And seconded? All in favor of dissolving, please say yes?
Yes!
Thank you, we are a dissolve. Thank you, we are unsolved.